Meeting, do honor, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Reporting in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First item there is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion when we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Approval of the minutes, four ten twenty-three.
Make a motion we approve the minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Corrections, additions?
I got a couple corrections.
Okay.
After the Pledge of Allegiance, Jim Leeny welcomed David Blow, B-L-O-W apostrophe S.
Yep.
And on the second page, at the very bottom of brightly, seems like there should be something more written in there. Doesn't seem to be total.
Do you have any idea what, Mary Lee?
No, but it's even my name that did it.
Okay.
I guess what I was wondering, because we had talked about maybe the fire district would go in on that brightly thing.
Yep.
And I think, I think what I meant to say was, has anyone approached them, see if they were interested? I would say that's what I would have put there.
Who was it that was here that suggested that?
Dave, Dave was talking about it.
I, I think I may have asked.
Did you, Joe? Oh, okay. All right. Okay. All right. Anything else?
But, but I would not.
Oh, sure.
Disagree. I think that Mary Lee's point would be an appropriate thing that, to have been said at that moment in conversation.
And the only other thing I've got is down on the bottom, updating of Castleton-Huberton. It says, there was also a motion made, a motion. I think that second motion could come out.
Those three words, made a motion, should be stricken. That's the third line up from the bottom.
That's it.
Okay. Bob, you have anything?
I wasn't here, though. I'm good.
You're good. Dick? Mary Lee's got it. How's that? Joe?
Yeah, a few things. On the first page, after lengthy discussion, comma, "the" voted in favor of the letter. I think we should instead of "the," say Cedrak voted in favor of the letter. On page two, under crushing bid, third line, fifty-five cents per yard. I think we should add per. I'm, I'm not entirely clear about what we were discussing in the second, second line of that paragraph where it says, "And Hunter would do if guaranteed next five thousand yards, which would not be legal." I mean, I don't think we need to say that because in the next sentence, we say Hunter will come for the five thousand, but he added fifty-five cents per yard for mobilization. That was kind of a, an idea. Let's see here. On the fourth line of that paragraph, total cost would be fifty-one, seven fifty-four. And so I think we can delete the four and instead put a comma in there. And on the fifth line, we say that Brent Clark has money, quote, I'm going to use quotes, tucked away. I don't think he really has money tucked away, but I will, I will defer to the manager to use the proper terminology for what's, what Brent said in that context. Was it?
Budgeted.
Budgeted? Thank you. And when we go down to the brightly paragraphs, the third line from the bottom starts, it doesn't, the sentence starts, it doesn't have to be out of the question. I think what happened in that moment is that Dee Fabritius replied, "That wasn't out of the question." Madison property for sale paragraph, last line, "It's," presently stands as IT apostrophe S, should just be ITS, no apostrophe. Update on Castleton-Huberton discussion, third line, "An oversight committee was also created." Oversight should be spelled O-V-E-R-S-I-G-H-T. And that's it.
Okay. All those in favor of motion and second with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 I'm going to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Okay. Now, we have another one here. I don't see it listed, but we do. The special meeting we had with the town of Hubbardton, Monday, May third, twenty twenty-three. If someone cared to make a motion regarding that. Joe?
I, I don't think we should act on that, Mr. Chairman, since that was a joint meeting of both select boards. I mean, I, I have some comments about the draft, but I think I'll reserve those for the next joint meeting.
Okay. Anyone else have any concerns about that?
I absolutely agree with Mr. Mark. I was going to say essentially the same thing.
Okay.
It does say final, not draft, though.
Well, good point.
Yep. Shouldn't be?
Should be a draft.
Well, it's the first time we've received it, then isn't it a draft?
Yeah, but it says final.
Where does it say that on there? Oh, mine doesn't. Oh, yes, mine does say that.
Okay. If not, we will postpone this till we have another meeting with Hubbardton.
There, there's some errors in there, too.
Okay. With corrections, how's that, Bob?
Yes. Would it be reasonable to ask the select board members that have corrections to forward those to the, to your administrative assistant? She can have Allison make any correction she feels is absolutely, is appropriate, and then we'll have a cleaner draft when it's time to approve them?
Makes sense. Okay. That seem reasonable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Moving on. Citizens' concerns or comments, issues not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Something that's not on the agenda.
Uh, Mary McIntyre.
Yes, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wondered, the oversight committee, I'm just wondering, since Hubbardton only owns eleven percent of CVS, should the numbers be equal between Hubbardton and Castleton?
Joe?
I'm happy to address that, Mary. It, at this point, they should be because that is the memorandum of understanding that we mutually agreed to a year or more ago.
Okay.
It, it's a reasonable point you make, but that's not what we agreed in the memorandum.
Anything else, Mary?
No, nothing else. Thank you for the answer, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? We have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes. Melanie's on. And Mary, and then Allison. So if, if Melanie doesn't have any questions, there are none.
You have any questions, Melanie?
She's probably muted. That's what I thought. The icon said. Can you put the participants up on that screen as well?
Wait. You want it like that, or you want the, their photos?
Whatever works.
They're over here. That's, that's problems. I'll leave it like that for now. How's that?
Okay. Anyone else? If not, we will move on. Police update. Chief Mantello?
Yes. So I know you got this today. Did everybody get their packet in there on the?
No.
No. Did you get that in your box?
It was in my mailbox today.
I didn't go today. I went on Friday when I was supposed to.
I got one. I got one right here. Do you need one?
We need one more? I'll make it. I'll make copy. I'll make copy.
I'll look at his.
You sure?
Sure. Can I look at yours?
Yeah, after the fact.
Yeah. So if you looked at, into March calls, we were down a little bit. Considered six hundred eleven to five sixty-seven, six eleven being a proceeding now. Agency assists went up. Everything else looks fairly within the range. Traffic stop was more difficult in March because we had the most snow in March. Any questions on any of the service calls?
Joe?
I just, one of the few significant changes is the theft complaints, Chief.
True, that.
Any comments about that?
That was the cars that were all gone through in one day. Started down in Route four A East and went all the way into the village on Elm Street. That's as far as that went. We did get some video footage of it. I put it out to the Ruttland agencies. Nobody can identify. Of course, you know, video footage is in the dark. It's kind of hard to see who it is.
These are break-ins of locked cars?
No. Some said that they locked their car, but you can't, it doesn't look like they, they were able to get in. So that's just my own professional opinion, but ninety percent of them were all locked. So that's where those came from.
Any other questions for Peter on this portion?
Yes, sir.
Just, can you speak to the citizen dispute? What, what is that?
So that could, that could mean anything. So that could mean a dispute over property. That could mean a dispute between a neighbor. That could be stuff that's not arrestable, but they just are having arguments over certain things. And we end up trying to mediate it or trying to show them the resources to solve that dispute.
Thank you. Anything else for Peter on this section? If not, go ahead, Peter.
The arrests, we were up, we got ten last month. One of them really came out of a heroin drug slash weapon stop, actually, that actually maybe had been related to the homicide Ruttland. So the one homicide, that was what, four months ago? The one that was right on State Street? Because the state was really actively, came over here, looked at the evidence. We sent the evidence up to the lab to get identified. So that's why that one, that's why those particularly went up more than we normally would run into. Any questions on those? Nothing? Traffic violations about, stay about the same, up a little bit for March. One thing that you'll know that if you saw the back notes, before I get there, though, I should say, our calls to service at Castleton, we only had two in March. They graduate on the fourteenth or thirteenth. It's a Saturday. So we've got a couple more weeks, almost three weeks, but really two and a half weeks. The weekend's been pretty good. I've been talking to Justin and Nodj, and I don't know what it is. Maybe they'll hit it in the last weekend. We don't know. Backup provided. You know, we're pretty consistent with that. Most of them are Fairhaven. Couple in Polley. Usually, those two from Polley are from the sheriff's departments. They're dealing with some people down there. Any questions on those?
I guess not.
So one of the things that I make it, we usually put our stuff on, you know, March being fairly slow month regarding call volume. We talked about the arrests, talked about continuing to our property checks, the foot patrols, those thirty-seven documented. And then the one thing that we, we had, we had addressed was the whole Drake Road citizen complaint on the speed enforcement. So as you can read down in our paragraph five, there were sixteen traffic stops done in that particular, twelve direct patrols, fourteen of them were residents. They were, well, it happens, that happens quite a bit, you know, even on Sand Hill or some of these other ones that people talk about, South Street. You know, they're not used to it. They're not used to sit, us sitting up there. So each stop, they kind of educated them. They did issue just written warnings for them. We also dealt with the whole school bus, where there was one ticket that was issued from Preston Lane, right down here, that was written for one of those violators, but the other ones have not, we have not seen anybody do anything. There has been another bus stop up near your house where they stopped by Glenbrook, where there supposedly there's a, a car that keeps, I don't know if it's the same one. But I told the bus driver, I said, "You guys got to give me plates if we're not there. I can't, you know, we can't be in all these bus stops at once." You know, that's, that's half the issue. So we're addressing those. We did our sex offender registry checks in March. And we did talk about the, the college. Any questions on any of that stuff? Yes, sir.
This is more of a comment. They make cameras. Will those buses consider putting the cameras in? Cameras that take pictures forward and backwards?
Yeah, they don't, they don't have those stuff. I know they have the inside cameras. I don't think they have any outside.
So if something happens inside the bus, they have it on, on footage?
If they work. Well, it's one of those things where they did get new camera systems a couple of years ago, but I don't know if, you know, I don't know how they work, whether they, whether it's all, because the bus company has their own system versus what the schools have, because it's their own company. So they have been able to get recordings, but not outside. The outside ones would be smart, but what do they want to invest in it? You know, that's up to them. That's going to be the only way. I mean, you can't have somebody there at all these stops. You know, I try to hit the Route thirty because they stop a lot, and I know people get very impatient on Route thirty. So I'll go up there quarter after seven and then work my, when the bus comes, and just stay back about four or five cars and just watch. But they're pretty good up there, so.
Anything else for Peter on this?
Just a comment, Chief. I've long appreciated these reports you share with us, and there's a lot of information in there. It's all, the, the reports you present to us are kind of two months back to back. And there's always some seasonality to the explanations, you know, the more snow in certain times of year, less, fewer students at other times of year. I'd be curious to know what, what, if any, long-term changes you perceive to have taken place in these kinds of data.
So that's a good question. So I think I mentioned it early in the year that we saw from the last, from the last two years, even this year, we've seen our call volume double. Various things, whether, not so much just traffic stops, just calls, doing things, just people got more issues going on. We're seeing a lot more thefts, obviously. You know, there's, there's, I mean, I could break that down. Maybe I can, by July, maybe I'll, I'll, we'll go through it, Justin and I'll just see what we can break down and maybe do some kind of comparative analysis on it.
No rush, but I mean, if you.
Yeah.
You and Justin did have the time to do a kind of, you know, five years ago and now comparison to what's happened in our town.
Well, I can tell you, when I first started in fourteen, I think we did like two thousand calls the most. Now we're up to like seven.
Really? Oh. Well, that would be interesting.
Anything else on this portion?
Just one last question for Pete. Quick one. When you were doing your patrols up on Drake Road, how, was there any really stupid ridiculous speeds, or was it all just?
They had some over fifty up there. Fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five.
Is it forty mile?
It's thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
So one of the things is I told, I told the officers, I said, "Look, we're not looking to here to write every resident to them." And I said, "Give them some written warnings. Tell them three-strike rule. You know, we go up there and we get you again. It's three times." You know, I think that's reasonable, especially if they know we're up there. Do you think that's unreasonable?
I think it's gracious.
Think it's generous.
Yeah, you're giving them three times. They do pay, they do, you know, obviously pay, you know, fund us and all that. We're not looking to, you know, to.
After two or three written warnings.
Two, two written and then the third time, the three-strike rule.
I think a speeding ticket after two written warnings is reasonable.
Yeah.
Just, just the, some of the speeds that you see people driving at on this town roads can be significant and.
Oh, yeah. Plus your driveways, people coming out.
Responding to a structure fire coming to the station, two o'clock on, was it, when was the last, the one in the afternoon? I can't remember which day of the week it was. It was a weekday. And I was coming up four A past Pruners doing fifty, and the car in front of me was pulling away from me. And I, I don't think they even knew, I had the red lights on and was using the siren when appropriate. And I don't think they even knew I was there.
Anything else? If not, Mike?
It wasn't you. Was Mike in Humvee?
No, it wasn't Mike. It was a smaller car.
Okay. Mike, do you have a statement?
I do. I, I want to address something that's been lingering in our community. This is allegations of improper behavior by a Castleton police officer dated eighteen April two thousand twenty-three. Allegations of inappropriate behavior and corruption within the Castleton Police Department were made on social media on or about April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Upon finding about these posts made on Facebook by a Fairhaven resident, I immediately texted Chief Mantello and informed him we needed to meet to discuss the post. I met with Chief Mantello on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and after discussing the social media post, we agreed that the allegations made were serious and warranted an investigation. I can report there is an ongoing investigation by Chief Mantello into the actions of this officer. The police officer's been placed on administrative leave while the investigation is ongoing. I cannot speak about the details of an ongoing investigation. I started my own investigation into the allegations made in that Facebook post, in particular, allegations made stating that the town, quote, "Because they, Castleton, chose to protect this mother effer," close quote, or end quote, another quote, "CPD doesn't want to do anything about him," end quote, end quote, "Sounds like there's quite a bit of corruption and looking the other way by people who are sworn to protect and serve this community," close quote. I take these allegations seriously and will investigate these allegations, which I have started. I want to be clear that inappropriate behavior by any police officer, or any other town employee for that matter, is not in keeping with our values as a community or within our ranks, and shall be handled according to our personnel policies, collective bargaining agreements, and according to law. That's my statement.
Any questions from the board?
Not at this point.
At this time? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Peter. Moving on. John Hale, boat washing green dump. Go for it, John.
May I see? Stand here?
Sure.
I'm asking you guys to help support a program that Doug Cosella and I conceived of and are developing and progressing. We have gotten the support of the Lake Pumsean Association and the authorization for me to speak to you about this. And to be the applicant there, the association will be the applicant on the permit required to use the green dump at all. Fish and Wildlife issues that certificate. The concept is simple. Doug says, "We have to do something more than we're doing, and what we want to do is to be sure that boats coming in and out of the lake don't have milfoil trailing off their propellers or off their boat, off their trailers." And that's the concept. Doug feels that his purchasing a pressure washer, which heats the water to a hundred and forty degrees, will be good to do that process. And we're working with Fish and Wildlife just where to do that. It'll be on the west side of the road, not on the lakeside for sure. And we're still in negotiations with them. We don't have the permit at this time. The thing that we really couldn't do was to pay an employee, and that's why I've come to you. Doug is going to fund the whole thing also, having bought the equipment. He's going to find the operator. He's going to vet the operator. He's going to train the operator. He's going to pay for the operator's salary, a couple of thousand dollars. He's going to, the proposal is to put into your coffers as a donation, your march for the support of this employee that you would theoretically have on your books. And the, we consider it a test project. We're only going to do ten days. It's not very much, but it is more than we've been able to get done on a boat wash activity up to now for, we've been talking about it for about five years. Doug, you know, and I'm sure you all, is one of those people that says, "Well, let's get her done," you know. And so I said I would help him work through all of the rest of the process. I hope I've been clear in my little one-pager, and I think I'll just shut up and listen to you ask questions.
Questions for John? Mary Lee?
Is this, can we mandate everyone, every boat coming out be washed?
No, it's not required. I've heard it said that it is, but all that I can read and understand from speaking to the state people is that it's not required. It would be strictly voluntary. It would, however, be free, and I'm open to anybody who had a boat and wanted to put it in the water or take it out of the water.
That was my same question, is what gives you guys, or whoever, the authorization to tell that boat he has to go through the boat wash? But you, you answered that. It's all voluntary.
Absolutely.
If the guy pulls in with a boat, just looks at you, backs his boat in the, there's nothing you can do about it.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Other question. Bob, you have any more?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's look at the administrative end for a second, John. My understanding is that you would, or that Mr. Cosella would find and vet this person and set his salary, et cetera, and then, or their salary, I should say. And then provide us with a two thousand dollar donation, and that would be to cover his salary plus any pertinent expenses?
Right. Particularly FICA. You have a FICA share. On two thousand dollars, the FICA share is a hundred and forty bucks, if I'm not mistaken. And workers' comp is another factor. That's a hundred and fourteen bucks. That would, those costs would be hard costs for you, and we would want to cover those in the amount of the donation.
That was my question and concern, is, you know, the, the cost that most people don't see because.
I know.
Paying, you know, Fred or Sally two thousand dollars, it costs the town more than not to do that. As long as that's factored into your, into your thought process here, I'm okay with that. The only other question I have is what kind of a workload would this have to the staff, your staff, and is there any impact there that you have concerns about?
My initial discussions with Melanie, it's been done in the past or something similar to it, but there is going to be some accounting time or staff time. And I see that it's in there, Mr. Hale, that you've got accounting in there. So it's factored in. It's just, so whatever our, you know, hour for hour or wages, we'd have to factor that in. But if it's for ten days, it seems like, I don't, I don't really think it's going to be a heavy lift for us. It's going to be different, and I want to talk to Melanie to make sure that we know how to go about it before we get back to you, before, if the board allows it to happen, we just got to figure out the best practice for us and accounting and all that. We got to call their auditor tomorrow, so that might even be a question to talk to them about. But, so I don't see it as a heavy lift. It's just different, and it'd be a ten-day kind of difference than how we normally do business.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, this sounds like a great idea, John. I appreciate Doug's willingness to foot the bill for this. I do think that the issue of motivating boat owners to go through this process is worth some consideration. Maybe there's a decal or a sticker we could put on their windshield to indicate that their boat is clean. put on their windshield to indicate that their boat is clean. Uh, I assume that Doug's decision about an employee would be transmitted as a recommendation to the town manager?
I presume, that's what I'm asking for, permission to present the guide to you and have it be well-received if you're willing. That's my idea. Yes, I'm giving, we're talking about hats that says "Got weed." Funny. Uh, and all sorts of other things. Everybody's got an idea of how to encourage people to do it.
Yeah.
But we'll have signage, um, that will be allowed by the Fish and Wildlife people, and it'll be "Boat Wash Today, Open Today," whatever it's going to say. And we'll have the dates published also.
I guess my last question is, uh, I assume that we have power over there?
Don't need power. It's a, turns out, it was to have been a diesel, but it's now it's going, because that's too loud. It's going to be a gasoline-powered engine. Honda makes them.
And that'll do the heating?
That'll do the heating also. There'll be a water tank, there'll be a box, trailers for storage on off, off-times, you know. And, um, we're going to get our water from Fire District One with all indications. There is a dry hybrid there, right, right there. But, and we say, "Hoo day!" But, uh, we can't do it because DEC says you'll pick up, you'll suck up potentially with milfoil or muck, and you, you don't want that. We don't want that. So, we're working with Carrie Fowler on being able to use water from good sources.
Any other questions? Not at this time.
I have one more.
Sure.
About how many boats go in and out in a day? I'm sure the weekend's more than...
I don't know how many boats go in and out a day. Um, I think that figure is probably knowable, because, you know, another project that the Lake Association does is the greeter program, where they have young people greeting people and saying, "Can we look at your boat? Can we educate you?" et cetera. And that's been very successful. The state really likes that, that we're doing that. This is on that order. But I have to, had to project something for telling Carrie how many, how many gallons I was going to use or need from him, and I've come up with ten boats in a day. I don't know what to expect, but one of the, people ask, "What's your, what's your goal? What's your, what would you consider a success for the project at the end?" And my goal at the end is to have a complete report of everything we did and how it turned out, good or bad. That would be my objective. This is a test by it, to see if it works.
So, is it fair to say, John, that this has cost mutual to the town?
Yes, that's our objective.
Any other questions?
I got one more.
Sure.
John, do you know what the state, how do I word this? There's, there's rules against transferring weeds from one pond to another. Does the state have any penalties? I know I've seen signs where it says, you know, you can't, you can't do this, you can't do that.
Right.
Do they penalize people if they're caught doing that, or, do you know?
I don't know. Um, we have been very cautious on the greeter program to say, "This is volunteer. Can we, can we allow..." You know, that would be the same with the boat wash, but I don't, I don't know of any real restrictions.
I was just curious.
I believe there have been a few prosecutions in, somewhere in the state on it.
Sure.
Any other questions for John? Yes, Joe?
This is not so much for John, but I guess, uh, I am interested to know whether our town manager thinks there's need for further research into some of the details of the procedures, or if you're ready to receive a motion from me on behalf of this proposal.
You have any response to that, Mike?
I, I haven't looked into it, Mr. Chairman, so I don't know if what you've done for research is thorough or accurate. I'm not challenging on it. Um, I just, I haven't done the research, so if the, I can do that, and if I find anything that would be, would contradict what you said, then I, I could at least come back and say, "Uh-uh," you know, until we get clarification or, or you have a chance to act on it. But when would you, what was your date for starting this?
Well, I'm hoping to be, the thing is that Doug has got to identify, already has identified one of his people who wants to moonlight in this, for the summer. At least we've lost that guy because I had to involve the Lake Association. It took a long time to get the approval. So, we're running up against that kind of a debt, um, thing. May I suggest that if you guys are willing to put it in the hands of the town manager, I will, you know, he and I will work out the details. I know from Melanie, for example, that you do a background check on employees. I think everything that you should, you ordinarily do for hiring an employee should be done for this person also. Well, the thing is, we'll bring them to you and we'll pay you the money.
That sounds fair.
Okay. I have a question for John then.
Sure.
If, if we, if you guys put your heads together over the next several weeks, and we either approve or deny this at the next select board meeting, would that be adequate?
Um, yes, I'll take it.
So, would you like to, uh... I don't think we need a motion. I think, just think we need to have the town manager and Mr. Hale head in that direction. Is that reasonable? Is that reasonable?
I'd agree.
Before you, if that's it, before you leave, John, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Related. What progress is the Lake Bomazine Association making with the Agency of Natural Resources to have them develop a comprehensive plan managing Lake Bomazine and other lakes in the state? It would be done with the agency, which includes Fish and Wildlife, Forests and Parks, DEC, and with local input. What progress is being made on that?
Can't speak to that, Jim.
Okay.
There is a very active, um, now called Lake Health Committee, and the gentleman is an enthusiastic participant, volunteer, of course, and, uh, they have great plans for, um, trying to apply for funding for studies just like that. And I think that that can, we can expect that in the future, but I don't know any specifics.
Well, then, just a follow-up question on that, then. If that's the case, and they're applying for funding, they're applying for funding to do it locally. Why isn't the state doing this since they own the lake?
Always an argument, and a strong one. Um, I can't tell you the answer about that to why the state doesn't pay more attention to our lakes. If I were in charge, I would do it differently.
I have one other question. Um, is the Lake Association having any success increasing the marine patrol hours on the lake?
That has not been a subject that's been raised recently, but, um, we can certainly, I'll put it in the hopper. There's a, I'm on the board. I'm the treasurer still, and I will raise that issue.
Because as far as, as I heard last summer, Marine Patrol was only out there four or five days. And we have anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand boats on the lake. Once again, it's state waters, and the state should take responsibility for it. Doesn't appear that this is happening.
It's a hard row to hoe, as you know, because we haven't had any success with it up to now, but it's certainly a topic that can be raised, and, um, we'll see if we can spark something.
Do you have the, do you have the name of the individual who is responsible for the Marine Patrol statewide?
Yeah.
You do? Okay, good. All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, John. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you at the next meeting. How's that?
Deal. Meantime, Mike and I will work out some details.
Liquor license, American Legion. Make a motion, we approve, uh, following liquor licenses. American Legion Post Number Fifty, First and Third Class with outside consumption. And BEE Incorporated slash Castleton Corners Deli, Second Class Tobacco and Tab, Tobacco Substitute Endorsement. Is there a second? I believe the chief has checked these, and he's nodding his head, "Okay."
I'll second.
A second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, ARPA consideration, Asset Management Program and Fire Department, not SCBA.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
Yeah, Mike.
It'll be me on this one right now. Um, so, at the last meeting, uh, when the Asset Management Program was discussed, um, I made a suggestion or that I look at towards the end of the year for budget surpluses and, um, you know, make that recommendation at that time, if there's going to be a surplus, to use that rather than ARPA funds. And Melanie put together a document, which you, hopefully you all have seen, or, or maybe in your mailbox. But, um, the news based on this is a much brighter picture than I had a month ago. Um, so I'm pretty confident that, that there, there will be a surplus out of those departments that would come from, and they wouldn't have to use ARPA funds on it. Pretty, I'd say one-hundred percent confident. And that's really bold, but I'm going to go out there and, I'm going to go on a limb.
You're out there, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Um, but on the Fire Department SCBA, so they're self-contained breathing apparatus, um, Dan Ducharme's in the room from the Fire Department, First Assistant Chief for the Fire Department. Um, last week I was over here, and he asked me to come see him, and, uh, got word that, um, the application that was submitted by Lexipol on behalf of the town, um, did make peer review. So, what does that mean? What it means is, I need to let somebody in the meeting. Sorry, that squirrel. Um, so, after talking with Dan, um, I, I reached out to Lance Harbor from FEMA, and I just need to get a call back from him. I sent him an email, is what I did, um, asking him to give me a call so I can get his account of why it wasn't pushed to peer review. Um, Dan shared with me, um, and I'll, Dan, Dan, if they ask you questions, I'll let you talk to the specifics of it. The other thing I was going to do is if, if this was something I'd feel is, just sounds stinky, that I would reach out to Senator Sanders' office, because Hallie Perrow from Senator Sanders' office is the one that sends us all the, the grant stuff. And I'll reach out to her, um, and find out, based on what I find out from, from Lance, that if this doesn't sound right, then I want to have Senator Sanders' office, um, hopefully be a advocate for us and deal with it. Doesn't mean it's going to change the outcome, but, you know, we, we hired an out, an external source to do this, and, um, and it doesn't even make peer review. Um, for what, what I heard was, it sounds like a computer program scored it, and then, and then an issue. But, Dan, I don't know if you, I don't want to be cryptic about it, so could you come up here to the mic, though, Dan, please? Mr. Chairman, do you mind if he comes up?
No, of course not.
So, I talked to Lance Harbor from FEMA, and the way that he explained it to me was that it was written, they, they, uh, they took the whole total of price for the project. Instead of dividing it out by the amount of air packs, it looked, it looked to the system like that whole dollar amount was for one pack, is the way he explained it to me. It's why that it, so it basically rejected it, the grant application, and it can't go any further.
Now, written inside of it, and I talked to Heath about this too, and we all reviewed it, it, it clearly states inside of it that, what the breakdown was. But, a computer, it sounds like a computer program scores it, or something somehow happens, and it kicked it out because the price of one SCBA can't be two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I haven't dug into it anymore.
Yeah, I've left a message for...
Did you print the application out?
I did, yep. So, if you want, I'll scan an email to you.
Okay.
But yeah, so we're at this point now where it's been rejected. Don't know if we can recover from it, but to lose two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars plus for something that says, "Oh, one, one pack's two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars," and a human being would look at it and go, "Doesn't sound right." But, so, I don't know. We're just, I'm speculating if I say any more until I talk to Lance. Um, I really don't know how that transpired or how they score it. But, so what is, what's the so what out of ARPA? Is on that original sheet that I, that I passed out to the, uh, select board members, um, the SCBA was on there, I think, for a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. Well, since that was done a year plus ago, a year ago, the, the price of the SCBA is over...
Have to get a current quote.
Yeah.
I don't know how much it's gone up with.
It was over two-hundred thousand dollars. And that, because the Cascade Air System, the refill station was also on that grant. So, you minus that out of there, um, just for the SCBA. So, the, so, so again, you're probably saying, "So what?" The so what out of it is if they don't, we don't get the grant, they, they're not going to be able to get new SCBA. Um, and they just had three packs, I think, fail, the hydro, or the test.
The flow test, yeah. We had three fail, and, and, uh, one that they took for training Saturday failed as well. So, we're down four packs right now.
Out of?
Out of twenty.
Yes. The, the bad news is just not getting any better with time. And so, as, as I find out more and can come back to you, um, I might come back and just say, "Hey, it's on that. This is what the real number is now." And if you could help me out, Dan, by finding some quotes, um, we'll let you know what it is. But, it's, it's getting to the point where we have any more packs fail, or if it fails while someone's wearing it inside of a, a structure, it just, it just looks bad on us. And I think we're better than that. So, I hope that we can find out what's, what the problem is, and if it can be rectified. And if not, I'll come back to you with a number.
Okay.
I had a pack fail.
The other thing, Mike, is that those, most of those twenty packs aren't NFPA compliant. They're three, three, you know, the standard is three revisions, so...
Yeah. So, now here we are with another issue, is if some, something does happen and someone's injured, and we know that lawyers love to snatch on to when our packs were tested, are they in compliance, and stuff like that. We end up standing there looking kind of foolish with outdated by three revisions of the NFPA standards. So...
Comment and a quick question for Dan. I was in a structure fire once and had an air pack fail. It was a very unpleasant experience. I was on the second floor, and how fast can you get out of a building?
Yeah.
Because I couldn't inhale. Um, second thing, the packs that are failing, are they the ones that we got on that grant twenty years ago? Or are they newer ones?
They're on the grant from twenty years ago, yeah. They're, the ones, the newest ones in engine three haven't failed.
Yeah, okay. And they should have been replaced.
They should have been replaced, yeah.
A while ago.
Few years ago.
All right.
They did try to, just so you know, that you guys did apply for...
We've been doing grants for air packs for, don't quote me, but I think like four or five years.
Sounds, sounds right to me. It's been at least four.
Yeah. Well, we were doing them when we got the tools, whenever that was.
I'm confident that four is not an exaggeration.
Like four years ago, you got the tools. Yeah.
Okay, so, Mike, will you get back to us as soon as possible so we can take some action on this?
I'll get you a quote.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else on this?
Last thing on ARPA, it's not in parentheses on there. I just had a conversation today with Wade, Wayne Elliott from Aldridge and Elliott on the sewer stuff, and he did advise that the one they did for Depot Terrace, we should get in a couple of days, um, and that they have not done the ones yet on Preston Lane and Creek Road. So, he's, he knows about it. They're on, you know, they're fitting into their schedule, and, because they get to do site surveys and come down here. And so, um, I, I did tell him that, you know, the board is going to have a hard time acting on use of these funds until they have all the information available to them. So, um, he's, he's aware of it.
Okay.
I just had to ask one question. What is the, I'm going to assume the lifespan of one of these air packs is fifteen years? Is that...
I think they're twenty.
They're twenty?
They're, the ones that we're replacing are over twenty years old.
They're over twenty years old?
I believe, I believe the standard was fifteen years.
Is it fifteen? It might be.
But the, yeah, but they started trying to work on them four years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a large amount of money to put into, um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
No, no. It's, it's, if, if some of them were over twenty years ago, it sounds like we should have started like ten years ago, at, when they're like twelve years old, to replace them, if, if their lifespan of fifteen years.
We tried writing the grant when they were, when they were going out of their life cycle, but we haven't been successful.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one of the things that the board did approve, and the voters approved, is to create that reserve...
Right.
For that kind of stuff. So, it, it's now getting us to a baseline where fifteen years from now, money that's going into that reserve can fund the replacement of those, and the price is going to go up. So, we're going to have to keep an eye on that. But, but that's, that's, that's going to solve it hopefully going forward, but it doesn't solve the issue now.
Sure.
Sure.
It should be a little cheaper too, because he's been buying bottles. So technically, when you apply for the grant, you have to apply for two bottles in the pack where we might be able to get away with just buying the pack and maybe one bottle.
That should look positive.
Those bottles are expensive, or I think three grand or something like that.
He budgeted side into each year into that. So it's the pack and the face mask is what really is probably the most of the cost that'll be because the bottles he already figures into his budget.
He's been buying bottles for quite a few years now.
That's good.
Okay. Shall we move on? Otter Creek Communications, Union District, Governing Board Appointment, Tim Monks Reappointment. Is there a motion?
Got a question.
Pardon?
Got a question.
After we appoint him and second it, Jim, we'll do the questions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Would somebody care to make a motion?
I would move that we reappoint Tim Monks to the Otter Creek Communications, Union District.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Now discussion.
Okay. If you read here, the Select Board of the Town hereby appoints the following represent for one or more alternatives for the term ending on or before the last Monday in April of this year. That's today.
I still don't follow you. If we appoint him now.
You can't appoint him now. It says his thing's going to end today.
Where did you find that, Mary Lee?
Just above his name.
Yeah. Above his name, okay.
That last paragraph.
We have till today to appoint him, though, right?
No.
You don't.
It says it expires.
Hold it, folks, one at a time.
Sorry, I just.
I'm not following what she's saying.
Well, Mary Lee is correct. As worded, this would not be what we want to achieve tonight.
Well, I'm wondering, when I read this, I thought the colon meant that we had to fill in a year. We have to describe when the term ends.
But there's no place to do that, and it says this year, colon.
I misunderstood the colon then. I thought that meant we were to add a year after that.
So what's your ruling on this, Parliament? I think we need to amend this form document that Otter Creek has provided. And for that sentence in the middle of the page there, modify that sentence to say, for the term ending on or before the last Monday in April of 2024.
Is that a motion to modify this document?
Is that a motion?
I would make that motion to amend this document in that way.
I will second that motion. And a second? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. You have the original, Jim, so.
I, let's see, if I do, I don't think I.
Might be in the blue folder.
It could be, could be, Dick.
Thank you for catching that, Mary Lee.
Yes, sir, there, guess what? There it is.
This one sided me. I had to hit him over the head. And then he didn't get it.
I will make the correction and initial it. And then sign it. So do you want to make another motion now, Joe?
Well, I think we have a motion on the floor that's been amended.
Yes, we do.
How many, who's in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, do we wish to vote on the regular motion or what? We had to amend it?
I think we voted to amend it.
Correct.
And I thought I was voting on the amended motion just now.
So did I. So I think we just appointed Tim Monks for a term ending in the last Monday of April in 2024.
Yes.
Sounds like it to me. That's my understanding of what we just did. Okay, and we all voted in favor.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to put on alternate? Why don't we do that?
We have that option.
I'm not recommending.
I don't think we've ever had one, but.
We've never had one? And Tim doesn't miss too much, so.
Okay.
I'm not overly concerned about it. Anybody concerned about that?
Nope.
Plus finding someone qualified, as qualified as Tim would be challenging. Okay, so nobody's concerned about it. Adopt the local emergency management plan? Mike?
So pre-signed in there on the first page when I doctored it up. I already had the form. So if you choose to approve it on April 24th, 2023, and the chairman sign it, I don't know if anybody's read through it or had any questions about it. There was some stuff that had to get updated as per the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And there's one thing I found in there that's not correct is the Wi-Fi password for this building. So I'll correct that before I get sent back.
What page is that on?
Yes. I got to refind, Mary Lee, I'm not really sure what page it was on. It's in the EOC part.
Copy I have shows I already signed it.
That's mine, too.
Yeah.
He just mentioned that, Mr. Leib, and you weren't supposed to say that again.
I don't even recall that one, but that's okay.
That's not good.
That's you, that's not me.
Do you want to show us where you made changes, Mike, or?
I'm trying to find that one that Mary Lee was talking about right now. If you see the word Castle in 911, it's on page 2-10, paragraph 7. Internet Wi-Fi is CFD and the password is Castle in 911.
That's not correct. You're going to correct it, is what you're saying.
Right, that's okay. I have to correct it.
Is it still up there? It's all there again.
I got it on my phone. I took a picture of it.
And I don't recall you asking me if I wanted to be the point of contact number three, but I'm willing, so.
Yeah, you've been there for all this time. I think you changed it.
Yeah, if something bad's happening, I'm going to be here anyway, so. So what was the change you made in that, Mike?
That was to change it to that new feast 4183 clever behind you, Jim.
No, the E911.
Yeah. It's, I put that new password in there.
Wi-Fi password.
That's what I will put in there.
Okay. Anything else? Joe?
This is dated May 1st, 2022. Should that be May 1st, 2023?
Absolutely, it should.
There are a couple of street names that are incorrect, as far as I know.
Okay.
Page four Cemetery Street, is I think Cemetery Road.
Yes.
And Blissville Road is at Depot, not Deport Terrace.
Yep.
And my email address is wrong. Strange that I would notice that. That's page 1-2, and I would recommend that you use my joe.marc.vt@gmail.com email, which is a little easier for people to remember.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
The one I was there is wrong. It doesn't work for everybody.
Well, the only thing on.
It's close, it's.
Mine is they got a capital M on my email, and it should be a small m.
Okay, that works. Okay.
That goes to screw it up.
I don't know. Everybody else's it's small letters.
Yep. What are you looking at, Mary Lee?
Your email address.
It's got a capital M where everybody else's has a small. I don't know that it would make any difference.
They don't care.
But I will fix it anyway.
Okay, anything else? If not.
Do you need a motion?
Motion, yes, please.
I would move that we approve the revised local emergency management plan with the minor changes that have been suggested.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Managers report.
Don't have one, but I have notes.
Go ahead.
Zoning, we're still searching for the zoning administrator. The one that we thought we had a hook in their mouth spit it out. And we are now have four more that were sent to the planning commission so they could interview them. And it can't come soon enough, board members. This is killing me. I did do a lot of windshield time today with Jeff looking at zoning violations. As Mary Jo went around doing some of her assessor work, she noticed that things were built without, there were no permits or, or she didn't know if there were permits. She saw new structures and brought it back to Jeff. And so we went out and looked at those today, and three of the four were definitely new construction with no permits on file. So I'll be following up to send letters to those folks. That's the most popular, I love that part of this job, being sarcastic. So hopefully out of that four, we find somebody that's willing. I did interview one from another municipality, and it's supposed to get back to me this week. If they're interested, they got that, I got a lukewarm feeling from it. So we'll see what happens there. There was a question about school resource, I was asked a question, I should rephrase that. I was asked a question about school resource officers and shortfalls that, in our schools, with all the school shootings that are going on, and they've been going on, but they seem to be getting more frequency here. Is what we have now adequate for all of the schools? And I did speak to chief about it, and it really comes down to the resource, for the resource officers' money. And if there was a concern, if the board had a concern about it and wanted me to pursue it further with the school district, I will do that. But just wanted to let you know that there was a question about it. And the answer is, there's not a school, there's not a school resource officer in every one of our schools all day long. They share time, and it's not all day. So there is, that, I think that answers the question. But I'm not going to answer if the board feels that's worth pursuing or would like me to pursue with the school district.
Yeah, so the full, so the only full-time one is the high school.
Can you step up to the podium so that microphone?
So the only, the only full-time is the Fairhaven has at the high school. Fairhaven covers the Fairhaven Grade School, I think 10 hours a week. I don't even know, actually. It's around there, maybe a little more. We cover four hours a day, but we cover the three schools on this side, Orwell Benson and then CES. So once those four hours, they're off the clock. But.
What time of day, chief?
It flexes. Like I do, I do my shifts in the morning. Some of the guys go from 11 to 3. It really depends when they go to work. Some work at 4, so they want to do their shift, that separate shift before they work. Justin likes to do his in the morning, I do mine in the morning. You can fluctuate. But, and based on, based on the contract, and I told Brooke this, if they need, like, let's say they had a call, one of the schools on our side, I'd bill out for that. So if somebody had to respond to something like a truancy issue or some kid run it off into the woods or something like that, we're still going to respond. It's just going to be a separate billing separately.
I think the concern was about if somebody, what I was told was, and I don't want to, got it, that the school may have a different way they want to handle this with how they use technology to help lock the school down, but, or control access. But as far as somebody coming into the school, there won't be a school resource officer there to immediately handle a threat.
I think the Nashville incident really changed some people because that's only one of the two that I know. And I've looked at a lot of the shootings in the past five, six years that shot out windows to get in because it was on lockdown. Once they evacuated, unfortunately, the custodial, the principal, and several other people were killed. But they wanted to lock down and some evacuated. So that's why you see, and if you ever saw the body cam footage or, let's say, the school footage of that shooter, doesn't look like they're running into anybody because they reacted immediately from the shots. And then they were, the fire, I don't know if the fire alarm went off because of that or somebody pulled it. Well, I would hope they wouldn't have pulled it because that gives a false sense of type of response that you want. Because you pull a fire alarm, if you don't hear the shots, you're going to think it's just a fire alarm, not an active shooter, so.
Peter?
Yes, sir.
Does the school district feel that their security is adequate?
That's something you'd have to ask Brooke, the superintendent.
And I'll drop the bomb. The school district's budget is $20 million?
Something like that.
Approximately $20 million. It seems to me that security should be a high priority. Is the school district considering doing anything to the structures? I understand shooting out the windows, but how about the doors? Are they considering doing anything to improve that situation?
I know that, because I'm on the district safety committee meeting. They, it was two years ago, they invested quite a bit in the entryways of all the schools. Fairhaven Grade School, this school, all of them. So you have a barrier. You've got to go in one door, then you got another set of locked doors. Sometimes that second locked doors, you can see the admin area here. But there's always two sets to get in. They've increased their cameras. So I think structurally, now outside, that's different. You know, they talk about like tree lines. You don't want a big brush line close to the buildings. You want to pretty much keep open so somebody can't hide behind certain things. So I don't know if they've addressed that. I know they had issues with some of the doors in the other schools weren't shutting properly, but they've addressed it. We try to stay on top of that. That's one of the things that we do. We do check those, but sometimes you go out a door, these emergency doors, they don't latch. That's what happened with the one in Uvalde. The door was ajarred, so. But I will bring that up, Jim, on the next district safety meeting. I think it's actually coming up. I think it's not this Thursday, I think it's the next Thursday.
And Mike mentioned that a person that asked this question. I'm the person that asked the question.
Yeah, yeah. We just did our drills actually this week, or last week, I'm sorry. We do our active shooter drills. We did it up here. We're going to do one at the high school where we use our airsoft and we do our tactical movements and stuff like that. So it was a combined. We had Fairhaven with us. We had Killington actually came down, one of them.
So of our schools on this side, we have four hours?
Four hours a day.
It's shared.
That we have to cover three schools. So normally.
Three schools in four hours?
Yep.
Okay.
It used to be eight, but they put it to four.
It used to be what?
It used to be eight hours a day.
And they've reduced it to four? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
My understanding, chief, is that the resource officer has kind of shifted in its role over time. I mean, I'm aware of a simpler time when we didn't have these school shootings so frequently, when the presence of the resource officer was kind of officer-friendly. It was a person to try to, you know, build relationships with young people and give them a favorable attitude towards people in uniform and law enforcement in particular. Now we have a whole new set of concerns. And this staffing model of four hours a day across three schools is kind of the officer-friendly model.
No, I disagree. No, we've always maintained security first, therefore protection, make sure they're set. And then you go into educating. You know, go and read a book. There's lots of things, eat lunch with them. So that's always been part of it. But we do a lot that way. But, you know, we can't be everywhere, you know? I mean, it could, you know, if you think back to all these shootings, and the successful in Nashville, the way they responded, we really analyzed that and talked it over even on a Zoom with other national people that were SROs. They did a very good job going in there that quick. Went up, once they, once they identified where the shooting was coming, they identified the threat, they went up and then incapacitated the threat. The problem lies is, see, this is the thing that I, person that I believe, because when you, part of, the whole thing with Alice is that you have to teach people that by the time we get here, five to six minutes, most of the things, most of the action's done. We're coming either recovery or picking up most of the time, not all time, most. So you try to train them what they can do in those situations before we get there. But there's a huge pushback on doing drills, well, it is, from K through six, doing the drills with them because of the trauma-informed ideology that's taken. Before, we could do that. We can't do that anymore. We have to wait till they get to middle school and up. So you're putting it on the staff. So anyway, that.
Anything else for Peter?
Well, I guess I would just say that, I mean, I think our role as a select board is to support the schools to the best of our ability. They are the ones that need to lead this initiative. And as citizens, we can bring our concerns to the school board if we're not happy with what's going on. But I think our, we have a division of authority in these cases, and we can't intrude on their prerogatives.
Well, I have to say, and I'll kudos our district, we're, we were way ahead of the ballgame, and some districts didn't have any SROs. Wouldn't even allow SROs in the school. Woodstock is still that way. Wouldn't allow officers in the school. And there's other districts that didn't have. It's changed in the last couple of years, the training and the things that we're, you know, that we do with them. So our district's pretty, I would say, very supportive. It just comes down to money, like everything else.
Anything else?
I got one more thing. Do you mix up your times, Peter? In other words, you're not at Benson School at the same time every day?
Sometimes, yes. So a lot of times, because I'll tell you, I'm biased, I usually start off with CES. I like to be there in the morning, buses come in. It's the school in our area where it has the most students, so I like to do that. And then sometimes I'll go to Orwell first, then Benson, or Benson and Orwell. I change it often.
I just think it's important to mix.
Yeah, absolutely. I wish that, probably this week, because we're down officers, is that I'll probably change it, maybe do an afternoon routine.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Peter. We appreciate the information.
Thank you. I also have on my list the transfer station hauling. I believe I've shared with everyone that the truck has been red-tagged out of service up there, our freightliner that we use to haul. And I have Hubbard's hauling for us. Of course, they charge us to haul. More expensive to go to New York than to Rutland. We're on the hunt for a replacement vehicle. I have spoken to Mr. Spalding and used, leveraged his expertise in the solid waste business. And we're trying to find a replacement vehicle that fits in our budget, that doesn't have 800,000 miles on it or will last us for a few years. But just to let you know, that's what we're doing. And I've also talked to a local mechanic that we use for heavy equipment to accompany us on our visit to make sure that what we're looking at is solid and would be worth the money that they're asking. So just to let you know that we're still searching and sooner rather than later because right now for them to haul on what we're, on what, the number, frequency that we haul at, we're talking like six grand a month. So I'd rather spend six grand towards a new, another vehicle than spend six grand on paying someone else to haul trash for us while our truck sits there doing nothing.
Is that it, Mike?
I got a question.
Oh, sure. You're not going to have any answers, Mike? I don't think.
Any idea what it costs us if we had our own truck and our own hauler? I mean, you're saying six grand to have Hubbard's haul our boxes. Any idea what it costs us if we have our own truck and person? Is it like $3,500, $4,000?
I don't have it at my fingertips, but they did, I asked Brent and Dave to do that research for me to kind of compare. And that's why I made a statement, because it come out that it's better, that we're hauling, it's cheaper for us to haul than the six grand. So I don't have it at my fingertips, but I'll certainly share it with the board tomorrow.
I just don't want this perception that it's costing us $6,000 more than what it normally would cost us.
It'd be $6,000 minus what we're already paying.
Yeah, that's.
I was going to ask the same question. What's the delta?
Just to get an idea, yeah.
What's the delta, Mike? That's the question.
Okay, you have a.
That's it.
You got it?
I've had my question, that's good.
Okay, Joe.
I guess, I wonder, is there any possibility that another municipality would be willing to haul our boxes?
How do you know who hauls their own stuff? Most people have Casellas picking it up, I believe. And that's pretty much a true statement, isn't it, Robert?
Yeah.
That or Hubbard's.
Hubbard's does a few.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anything else, Mike, on your, in your notes?
No, I just had ambulance service, but I think Mary Lee, I'm not stealing her thunder.
Okay. Moving on then. Purchase orders for approval.
I didn't see any purchase orders in my packet. Do you have any?
Yep, give them to you. Now, you have this one here in red ink. That's not your red ink. I know whose red ink that is. But anyway, ARPA, $315?
It was still part of that money that the board had opt for this building to, that was the last $315 that Vermont Digital came in to install the cameras and.
We don't actually need to approve a $315 purchase order, do we?
I don't know, the only thing, I don't know if that's above and beyond what the original, $5,600 and something was the original amount, so I have to.
Then you have to.
So I'd ask that you guys sign it. If it's not, then we can.
I'm not trying to split hairs, it's just normally, we don't see the ones that are, this falls within your purview. I'm going to make a motion, we approve purchase order number 050152 to Vermont Digital for installing port replicator and Zoom setup for $315 to come out of ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Question?
Did you figure out what wasn't working at the beginning of the meeting? Did you get it figured out, or is it still not working?
No, I got it working now.
Got it working now? So is this the final configuration?
No, there's supposed to be a TV over there, but the problem is the port up in there that we had won't fit another cable, so we'd have to go invest in another, like, forgot what it was, it was like 250 bucks, to be able to run and get, change that to run our cable there. So if I can ever figure out this part, so you can see full screen, because I've dragged that, this is as big as I can get it to go, so that people in the room can, I like it over there, I'm not sure if you guys like it over there, that the people that are in the audience might be able to see it better, they're not looking through Dick's head and Jim's head. But then you can't see it.
But I lost the, my eyes in the back of my head when my kids grew up. I didn't need them anymore.
So what I do have is I have another TV.
You've got grandkids, start growing them back.
I can set it on a table, but I know I'm blocking your guys' view.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I think it's been seconded.
It's seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we approve port purchase order number 050167 to the Castleton first responders for their annual point fund for the sum of $4,500.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Is there discussion?
How do they get paid the point fund? Is it, can you speak to that, Dick?
I can't speak to how first responders do it. It's for the same basic thing the fire department fund is for. But I can't speak to that, and I don't know that our chief officers can either, can they?
Presumably someone keeps a log of who shows up for how much time.
That would be my presumption, but I can't speak to.
I know Justin took over a big piece of that with Walter for the first response.
They have their own account, so money's been given, the town's not paying every individual. They pay it to the, like the fire department association, who then, then can cut their own checks based on their log of who did, how many points people had for showing up and stuff like that.
I mean, Dan and I could speak to how the fire department does it, and I would like to think that the first responders aren't much different, but once again, I can't confirm or deny anything on that.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we move on to the warrants.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number 0413R for $26,500. Warrant number 0413 for $1,249,722.04. Warrant 0420, did you actually look at the warrants, gentlemen?
I was looking at.
The cover sheet's an error. The cover sheet.
How was I going to know that, Dick?
The warrant, if you look at the warrants, that's how I.
I'm looking at the warrants.
Oh, you look at the warrant. The warrant specifically states $1,249,000.
Why isn't that on the front here?
Because the person generating the cover sheet made an error.
Okay.
Okay.
And I always double-check all this stuff before I read it.
Good for you, Dick.
Excellent.
So moving on. Warrant number 0413 for $1,249,722.04. Warrant 0420 for $5,457.83. Warrant 0424 for $291,736.01. Warrant 0424A for $315. Warrant 0413P for $15,324.28. And warrant 0420P for $15,127.87.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Yep. Bob?
I've got one. Probably going to want to know the page number here, if I can find it. Page two. On 0424, under Rutland County Solid Waste District. This is probably a Mike question. Why are we hauling our, it looks like we're hauling our CND to the Rutland County Solid Waste District?
We are right now. They jacked the price up down there, $10 a ton on us. And we calculated it out, and we're almost breaking even by going one way or another. So to save wear and tear on the truck, we just, we went, we're starting to go to Rutland.
Is Hubbard's going to haul to the Rutland County Solid Waste District for you? Or are they taking it down? Or they take it to their place?
They did, they did a couple, they did two to New York and one to Rutland. But I asked, it was a mistake, I was supposed to be going to Rutland. The difference, the difference was like almost $100 per, like going to Rutland versus going to New York, just on their fee. But then you got the difference of the $10 per ton down there, too. That's why I want to take it to Rutland. So until, they never gave, even gave us notice. They were supposed to give us notice of this change in price, and it went from $73 to $84 a ton.
So is Hubbard's going to haul it for $100 cheaper if they take it to Rutland? That's what I'm getting at. So they're not going to charge us $260 a pole, they're going to charge us $160 a pole?
No, they're charging us $260 a pole to go to Rutland, $300 something to go to New York.
Oh, okay, you didn't tell me that before, so I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, no, it's, well, that's why we said, I didn't want them going to New York. So the $260, I told you $260 or $269 a pole, that was based on Rutland, because I never even had a conversation with them about New York. So when I got the bill, I said, why are they going to New York?
I wasn't aware that they were.
I wasn't either, until we got a bill that showed two poles in New York.
Okay.
I'm not sure, is that your question?
Well, it pretty much does. I got a little follow-up question to it. Does that, $122.93 a ton, does that include the solid waste district surcharge? It does?
All-inclusive, yep.
That's it, I know.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We have two others.
I would move that we approve warrant number 0414P in the amount of $612.53. And warrant 0421P in the amount of $612.53.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I recuse myself.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dick recuses himself. I was changing the one that we had to change, that's all.
And if this came out a little wrong when we found that error on the cover sheet, I apologize for any inappropriate comments. But I learned the hard way before to double-check these things.
I just didn't want you to assume we all knew that. That was all that. That's all I was, because Joe, Joe was right on top of it when you announced that, you know.
You know, I always, when I double-checked the cover sheet versus the warrant, and I saw that, and I said, huh.
I'm always appreciative you guys are civil. You ever watch over the board meetings in their towns? It's always not that way. I do appreciate that.
Sometimes it takes some effort, but it's usually worth it. You agree with that, Pete?
I always tell people to, it's always to apologize, forgive your actions, because people just go, it de-escalates really quick.
Civil discourse gets more accomplished than any argument ever did.
Except over property law.
That's when you go for your citizen dispute.
That's, we're just.
That's when you call the fence viewer.
That'd be me, yeah.
Oh, you'd use it today, Robert? What? Could have used you today.
Yeah, yeah. Could have called me, Mike, I was around.
My neighbor put up a big picket fence between our yard and his yard. And when it first, when he first put it up, because I hadn't been there for many years, it just bothered me. But then after I was there for a couple of years, I'm glad he did it. Because I can't see in his yard, and he can't see in mine, and, you know. And when we want to walk around the fence and talk to each other, we do. Can you hand these down to Joe as I sign them, Mike? You're welcome.
You'd like to have Dr. Seuss for the sneetches? Thank you.
I was going to ask you, Mike, the transfer of the ARPA funds, that was because we're changing banks or something, or the bank changed names, or?
No, higher, better interest rate.
Okay.
Melanie did a projection for ARPA funds for the end of the fiscal year, it's like close to $14,000 in interest that we, the town earned.
By moving them?
As it is now, but now that there's a better interest rate, that may change that number a little bit. It's a substantial amount of money.
You're looking for nine of them, Joe.
Nine. Thank you, thank you.
Present, sir. Here we go. Okay. Select boards, comments and/or concerns. Do we have any? No?
I do, but I think both of them have to be in executive session.
Okay? So no other comments or concerns?
Not for me.
All right. Is there then a motion? Any recap that we need? Seems we thrashed it all pretty well. If not, is there a motion to go into executive session indicating what the purpose of it is?
For real estate.
Okay, make motion.
You just did.
I didn't make it. But I can, but I won't.
The police chief is here. Do you, do you see any need to go into executive session with him before maybe we go in for real estate? Are y'all set?
Well, no, we better do that, too, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel at 8:29 with the board, the town manager, and the chief of police.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.